Okay, ZA-01-2021.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Article 11, sign standards, Punta Gorda code, rewriting and reorganizing the same in its entirety, providing for conflict insufferability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, this is the second reading of the sign code ordinance. I know everybody received a copy of the email that I sent yesterday, and I do have some major concerns about some flags that I saw over the weekend, flags and signs for that matter, that I saw over the weekend, and things that we did not take into account. And I would like to discuss those because I think they're going to be, it could be room for conflict if we don't address them.
Ma'am, before you proceed with that, could Mr. Levin explain, I was talking about this before the meeting, and there's a section in the sign code that has to do with holidays and what's allowed during holidays, and what that may allow and what you may want to see it allow.
I agree, and I did see that as well. But in this case, for military and patriotic-type holidays, they're no different than Christmas or Halloween or any other holiday in that they put them up as much as a couple of weeks before the holiday and leave them up. And what I don't want to see is the sign police going around and citing people for having multiple flags on their property honoring Memorial Day, or Labor Day, or Veterans Day, or Flag Day for that matter. So how do we make sure that that doesn't happen? That's a concern to me. We had a number of streets, and I drove around a fair amount this weekend intentionally, we had a fair amount of streets that the entire street was lined with flags all the way down the street, with several on each property. In addition to the flags people had in flag holders and on flag poles, we also had several cul-de-sacs that had flags lining the cul-de-sac. Who gets responsibility for that? Because nobody actually owns the cul-de-sac except the city. What about cemeteries? And what about an example of the picture that I showed? It was a Home Depot display that had a little, I don't even know what you call it, it was artificial turf, and around the perimeter of it, it had flowers and flags. How do you, how do you make sure that none of that gets thrown into the equation of being fined? And that's kind of stuff really concerns me. And at the moment, I don't believe we have any official cemeteries that are in the city limits, but if such time happens where the one on Indian Springs Road decides to annex, which has been discussed numerous times, they would have to be exempt because they have flags every day of the year on multiple locations in the cemetery. So what do we do about things like that? That isn't a military holiday, that's just patriotic acknowledgement and memoriam for people who have passed. What would your suggestion be on this, Mr. Levin?
Well, I would start with recognizing that we have provided in the code an exclusion for holiday decorations, which would include Memorial Day, Veterans Day, you know, recognized holidays.
But for what length of time?
Well, in any code, and this one would be included, there is some degree of reasonableness that needs to be factored into the enforcement of the code. We could, we could put certain limitations on, you know, time limitations for holiday decorations, but I don't think that that would be appropriate. If it's in, if it's in the streets right-of-way, that someone other than the city is putting these flags or other signs, you know, we have the discretion and the authority to remove those because they're in the city's right-of-way, and unless it's otherwise authorized by a permit issued by the city to use the right-of-way, we have the ability to remove them. You know, I don't have a definitive answer, other than saying that when we enforce any code, we exercise reasonableness and discretion in enforcement. And if, if someone has a number of flags on their property that exceed the number that are permissible, or if they're not on the flag poles or posts mounted to the building, and they're there for an extraordinary period of time beyond a recognized holiday, we have the discretion to enforce. And, you know, education is part of the enforcement process. For the first, for the first violation, a warning notice would more than likely be issued. But, you know, if you wanted to do more than just that, we would need direction as to, you know, specifically what you would like to do, and then determine whether we can do that in a constitutional fashion.
I would have a serious problem if code enforcement went around and started pulling American flags off of people's property, no matter when it is. I'm, I just feel that's wrong. And I have had any number of people contact me since the last council meeting furious about American flags being, not being able to be separated from this whole thing. And I explained the concept that we're having to go through, and people are just, they're just furious. And I would not want to see anybody make a subjective decision that's a city employee and go around and start pulling flags off of people's property. I also, I wish I would have gotten a picture of it. I actually left my house at 5:00 the other night to go find the flag that I was referring to in my email. This flag covered the entire garage door. I've never seen a flag this big, except for on a car dealership and the RV place down in Fort Myers. I've never seen a flag this big. It covered the entire garage door, left to right, top to bottom. It was the entire garage covered with a flag, one flag. And they were, they were just pulling it down when I drove by to go take a picture of it. So I have a feeling it's not the last time we're going to see that.
So my, my role here is simply to advise the city council. If the city council felt that they wanted to exempt the American flag from any restriction, that's your prerogative. My advice is that that would not pass constitutional muster as the Supreme Court currently interprets the Supreme Court, the Constitution.
I'm, I'm pretty sure the Supreme Court didn't really mean that. I'm pretty, I mean, I have a real problem with that, and I can't imagine that the Supreme Court actually meant American flags to be thrown into that whole same pot of mud. I don't know, I have a real problem with it. And what do we do about cemeteries? Because that's going to be a real problem if we don't exempt them in this ordinance. And I think we need to be proactive about it because there has been numerous discussions. Mrs. Pravky has talked to them how many times? Fifty? Over the, over the last eight years?
Bunches.
A lot of times. And, you know, there's a very real chance that they may come into the city. And I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. That needs to at least be an exemption without even batting an eyelash.
And that's an easy fix. We can, we can certainly exempt cemeteries from the limitation with respect to flags, in the general sense of flags.
So, okay, so like what about these other retail facilities? And what about cul-de-sacs? Who, who is the responsible party for flags that are placed on a cul-de-sac? The city basically owns the cul-de-sac.
And it would be within presumably the city's right-of-way. So if you're going to, if somebody is going to put a flag or any other sign in a cul-de-sac, the city would have the authority to remove it unless it was otherwise authorized.
There are numerous cul-de-sacs where the residents that live on that street have paid a lot of money to decorate their cul-de-sacs, and some have signage and some have flags. And I, I just think that that's not the kind of city we want to be if we're going to start policing things like that. Nancy.
Are we permitted to somehow exclude cul-de-sacs or, or in the enforcement area?
They're city property, right?
Right.
So we can, can't we say anything, I mean, they told me parks would be exempt, so if a cul-de-sac belongs to the city, I don't see how we could do anything. I mean, as long as we think it's okay, as long as the people who put it there want it there, right, Lisa?
Lisa Hanen, zoning official, for the record. Usually cul-de-sacs, if there's any statuary or signage, it's usually considered decorative and part of the landscape. I believe our code officers would use the reasonableness standard, as Mr. Levin stated, for any types of flags or holiday decorations. I don't believe we're going to go up and tell somebody that they will have to remove the line of American flags during Memorial Day, Flag Day, Veterans Day, things like that. We, that's, and most likely any type of violation or alleged potential violation would be complaint-driven if we had, we're not going to ride around and look for the holiday decorations saying they're a day out of compliance, or if we have a time limitation on that. We don't do, it's in the code now that they should be removed. I think it's too, I'd have to get the, the code as it's written now out, but we would not even address that until our own holiday decorations would be down for the city because they go up early and they come down a little later because it takes so much time to get them down. We don't even address that. And if it's complaint-driven, we, we let them know that we're not going to do anything about that at the time.
I just want to make sure we're not going to overkill on the enforcement with this kind of stuff. And, and, you know, I seriously, I'm not trying to be picky about this, but I just, I saw all these things that, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, that's a violation, that's a violation, that's a violation, you know, according to the new terms of the new sign code. And, and I just don't want us to be the sign police, and I, and I don't want us to be misconstrued as we're trying to enforce something that is not in our purview. I think, I think the idea is to be compliant with the Supreme Court ruling, I understand that. I just want to be reasonable about how we enforce it.
And the cul-de-sac is public property, so we could determine what, what would be permitted there.
Unless it was within a subdivision where all the roads are private, I mean, that's where, that's kind of where I was thinking, but.
Well, in these, in these cases, there's numerous, I mean, almost every street in PGI and BSI have cul-de-sacs.
And Berndstrau Meadows.
Yeah, that's right, too, yeah. So, you know, I just, and people have spent a lot of money to decorate these cul-de-sacs in a lot of cases. And I know all of us know streets that have them. So, you know, some of them have signage, welcome to whatever cove or whatever they end up calling it. And some of them have, a couple of them even raised flag poles on them. So, you know, as long as we don't do that kind of enforcement, I'd be okay with allowing it. But I do, I do think we have a couple of things we do need to exempt, and cemeteries are definitely one of them. And I think the retail stores that have decorations for different seasonal events are probably, also need to be exempt.
Lisa, I have a question. My front porch sits, it's sort of a southern look front porch, and I had bunting that I put up every year. I put it up just before Memorial Day, and I, I used to take it down. I mean, I put it up before Memorial Day and take it down after Labor Day. First of all, I wasn't sure from what I read in here that I could even put it up at all because there are eight of them instead of whatever. I didn't know if that counted as a flag each thing. And I also, it takes me a lot of time to put it up, and if I had to do that up and down and up and down and up and down, I, well, this year I just didn't do it because I wasn't sure what the law was, and I didn't want to be in violation. Can you help me navigate that?
I would consider it under holiday decorations, not that it's not an actual flag, it would be a holiday decoration. I may defer to Mr. Levin to see what his opinion is, because I've relied heavily on, on him regarding the rewrite here. We've worked together, but I relied a lot of, with his opinion. But that would be, to me, considered a decoration that was on a, on a structure.
Well, you know, we have the thing that you can't hang the flag, like, from the top of the porch down. It has to be on a pole, which I don't understand why that's that way either. But I was just afraid if each one of my, you know, thingies counted as a flag, I was in trouble.
Well, again, just like the U.S. Constitution isn't 100 pages or more long to accommodate every possible scenario that needs to be addressed. Our ordinance is hopefully only as long as it needs to be to address the primary concerns. And some of it is left to some discretion and interpretation within reason. I was talking about the holiday decoration to address the particular Veterans Day and Memorial Day flags. But as Lisa's point out, seasonal decorations are also granted in exclusion, so that would address the, the shopping center that wants to put seasonal decorations up. And it's just a matter of, you know, whether the privilege is being abused as to whether or not there would be a need for taking some type of official action to request that, hey, the holiday is long over. It's, you know, the spirit of the ordinance is to try to eliminate visual blight that's created by signs, which was really kind of the reason why we were asked to take a look at revising the code to begin with because the code as it was, as it currently exists runs afoul of the Supreme Court's decision in Reed versus City of Gilbert. So we're not going to be able to address every possible situation, but if there is something that fits in between what we have written and is within the intention of the ordinance to address, we can address it. If there's something that's clearly not within the parameters of the ordinance, we can address that, too. And, and there probably are going to be things that come about that weren't considered, even because maybe the opportunity or the, the technology that makes a sign now possible, like, for example, holographic signs perhaps, wasn't considered at the time of this ordinance. We may be able to, in the future, make amendments to take, put things in and to take things out. The fact that we haven't addressed every possible scenario should not be a basis for not approving the code.
I just don't want to get this nasty gram from code.
What about car dealerships? Every car dealership I've ever seen has hundreds of signs, hundreds of flags. We have a ton of those on Marion Avenue, I mean, on 41. That's going to also have to be exempt.
Are they in the city?
Well, one of the earlier cases with respect to flags and signs and First Amendment rights was a case in our, in our federal circuit out of, out of Atlanta, the 11th Circuit Court of Appeal, relating to a car, Demet Car Dealership in the city of Clearwater, where they object, the, they were cited for violation of the city's sign code because of the number of flags that they were putting on the property. What happened was that when the courts were looking at the city of Clearwater's code, they saw that there was discrimination between types of messages that were being provided, that it exempted the American flag from the prohibition or the limitation on the number of, number of flags. And, and then throughout, in its entirety, the city of Clearwater's code, because it had, just like our code has, just like the town of Gilbert's code has, different treatment for the content of the sign or flag that's being displayed. So I think that the commercial properties are going to have to also abide by the provisions of the, of our code if we're going to be even-handed in enforcement. Now, we can make certain changes between residential, which, which we would presume would want to be more restrictive versus commercial. But if, if, if what you're going to say is that a, a car dealership can have unlimited number of American flags, but a limited number of other types of flags, that is exactly what was found to be unconstitutional in the Demet versus City of Clearwater case.
They're going to have a major problem.
Lisa Hanen, for the record. We had a major problem back years ago. However, they have been abiding by the number of signs permitted and the number of flags. They get business event permits for additional banners and, and signs during the year, so many times that they're allowed per month. And we haven't had an issue with excessive types of, like, business banners or, or signs or excessive number of flags in the past probably five to seven years.
So are we going to limit them to four signs per acre?
That's, well, okay, so that would be the freestanding sign, so yes, they could. And then if the flags right now on flags or flag poles, they're, they're limited to four flags per parcel. That's flags per parcel now under the commercial zoning districts.
I raise this because a few years ago, I was involved in a, in a fun event that was called a road rally. And one of the stops we had to make on the road rally was to go to a specific car dealership and count the number of flags on the property. And I'm not exaggerating when I tell you there were 186 flags on one property. And every single car had a flag, some of them had two. There were flags on every light pole, there were flags hanging on flag poles. This is a standard procedure that car dealerships do typically.
I don't know if it's everywhere, but I know I've had car dealers tell me that the reason why they put so many American flags out is because in our current code, it's, they're not restricted. We do not allow flutter flags and that kind of, the feather flags, that kind of thing. So they're just trying to get attention as people drive down the road. And so they're saying, we can put the American flag out and nobody's going to complain.
Right.
So it may, it's, it's just going to, it just has to be a change.
I just, I just, I can't, I can't wait to see, to hear the hysteria over this.
You know, it's really amazing that an ordinance that is being crafted to provide for freedom of speech seems like it's really limiting, people perceive it to be limiting free speech. Every single letter of ire that I've received in the last two weeks has been because we are limiting free speech. And if the whole purpose of this is to not limit free speech, we're, we have not sold this very well, I guess, I don't.
I agree totally, but it's, it's us that put all those things in there, wanted David to put them in there.
I know.
Well, yes. We've done it to ourselves, and so we have to decide.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
I think we listened to the public, we listened to the public for a long, long time complaining to us about some of the things going on in the community. I understand what Mr. Hurst said about, Hurst said about the, I understand the point, however. I also feel that in many regards, people need to be sensible about their, their use. And, and, you know, it's a sensibility, you know? I have a right to go to a bar and have a beverage. I don't have a right to get, you know, to get inebriated, get in my car and go, you know, harm people. So it's, there are just things that I think lately people have, have pushed the envelope to the point where it's, it's crazy. Things that make people, I realize that in society, you know, there are things 50, 60 years ago, you know, when, when television first was invented, or was, first became commonplace, you would never see two, a man and a woman in a bedroom in a bed together. They would be in twin beds, you know, that kind of thing. It's just the mores of the society change over time. But in this particular case, I'm not sure that something that we have seen recently will ever be that acceptable. And we're trying to make the best decisions to provide for flexibility at the same time as, as help our, you know, somebody who also complained about the fact that you're restricting our free speech, then in the same token, same email complained about our woke police department that isn't able to, can't go arrest somebody who has a, is waving a, some kind of a sign that has bad language on it. And it's like, well, wait a minute, you can't complain about, you're limiting my free speech because the police department can't go do anything. It's not against an ordinance, it's not against anything. So until such time that we enact something to make it such that you can, so I think it's, you know, we are in a very difficult situation. I get that. And that's why we're here.
I think we're going to see very quickly what the, what the holes in this are.
Yes, we are. The one question I was asked by Berndstrau's Association because they have monument signs in the, and I have assured them that the non-conforming sign on, it's on line 358, it's item number 41, non-conforming sign, that means any, a sign that was constructed, erected, maintained in non-conformance, or in conformance with our rules and regulations at the, in effect at the time the sign was established would cover that because they were concerned that we would make them tear their sign down and build something new. I assured them that we would not, so.
That's correct.
I just wanted to go on the record and bring it up.
So all of the signs leading into various housing developments are non-conforming but will be allowed to remain, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, I don't know if they're all non-conforming, but any that are.
Well, any that are, yeah. I mean, because PGI has them, BSI has them, Berndstrau Meadows has them, Seminole has them.
And the majority of those, again, Lisa Hanen, zoning official, for the record, and the majority of those were approved by city council years ago. Some of them have special exceptions, just depends on where, where we were in the process at the time. But we have permits for, I'm sure all of them, I've got folders for those.
But that's not to say that there may not be a sign out there that we're not yet aware of that predates the effective date of this new code and also was not in conformity with the code that existed currently. That would not be a grandfathered or non-conforming sign. Bear, you know, look, if it's a really old sign, and, and it was considered to be non-conforming under the current code, then it would still be grandfathered. But there, but, you know, to say that we are aware of every single sign out there that may be non-conforming to our current code and not legally non-conforming, I just wanted to be legally correct in our answer to your question.
Okay, so what about someone who is planning to annex into the city who has a non-conforming sign?
Okay. So you want to go ahead and take that one?
Lisa Hanen, zoning official. That would be covered under their pre-annexation agreement.
Correct.
Just wanted on the record.
Yes.
Because there is one.
Yes.
So, yes. John, did you have something?
Not yet, but yes.
Okay.
So while you're thinking, could I just read something again?
Sure.
Just for the record and for the public listening. When we look at Section 11-1, intent and purpose, the first intent under A says, "Signs have a strong visual impact on the character and quality of our community." And then when you go down to number five, under the purpose, "Promote a positive visual image of the city and protect the beauty of the city's built environment by encouraging signs that are compatible with the architectural style, characteristic and scale of the building to which they may be attached, appropriate to the size of the subject property, amount of street frontage adjacent to the subject property, and compatible with adjacent buildings and businesses." And it goes on to say under number eight, "Protect and encourage creative and innovative approaches to signage and signs that are of quality design, pleasing and..." approaches to signage and signs that are of quality design, pleasing in appearance, and are appropriate in size, material and illumination to the surrounding neighborhood or district." So really, when you look at the purpose and intent of this, it was drafted in a way that says the intent of this whole ordinance is to provide an environment where everything's cleaned up and you have the strong visual impact that signs can create are mitigated by certain considerations that promote a positive visual image of the city and protect the beauty of the city's environment. So that's the whole purpose of the sign ordinance when we consider the rest of what it says.
And if I might, throughout not only this current process, but every time there's been a discussion regarding our existing sign code, there has been an expressed intent by our city council not to have the City of Punta Gorda look like unincorporated Charlotte County, who has a sign code that's more permissive than ours in many ways. To suggest that their sign code may be more in line with freedom of speech, I would perhaps disagree with that. I think that we are entitled, consistent with the constitutional limitations that we can place with respect to our regulations, that our ordinance does address the city council's concerns at the same time protecting free speech rights.
To that end, there are three county commissioners that have asked that we forward our final sign ordinance to them because they are going to be going through a review of theirs as well. Nancy, go ahead.
So I have a question. Over the weekend, there was an individual who was at the corner of Taylor and Marion who had something printed on their T-shirt. I have the picture that was forwarded to me by a resident. You can't read what was on the T-shirt. And the person's holding a sign, but you can't read because the sign is facing the other, opposite direction. But they had, the person had a PVC pipe device that they had created. And then they had a big flag with a foul language on it, obscene, you know, about our current president hanging from it. And that you could clearly read, and it was right there by the seafood festival. I'm sure people visiting our community were thinking like, what in the world? But you could see the, so we know that, I knew that where it was. But the question is really, we've addressed printed signs on, on T-shirts or whatever, handheld signs, but what about this PVC thing that he's, you know, hanging, an obscene sign? I'm, I'm looking through our code to say, have we accommodated that?
Yes.
Accoutrements.
Yes.
We use the term accoutrements.
Or thing.
What?
Or thing. Under our definition of, we even, we attempted to define sign in our definitions to it. We may have overlooked everything, anything, but.
I just want to make sure that, that, that's not a loophole, that's all.
We have attempted to address conceivable.
We included the words apparel and accoutrements now.
We, we, we added that, but we also, I mean, I don't even, we had a discussion, I don't think that was even necessary, but we did it just to be a clarification based on previous discussion with council. But our definition of sign includes thing. And, and if that thing displays language which is indecent, as we've defined it, and is legible to people within a public right-of-way that would include the potential of someone under the age of 17 viewing it, that would be a prohibited sign.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that wasn't.
We tried.
Yeah, I saw that it had been added that it said apparel and accoutrements. So I, I think that would cover it, if I understand it correctly.
Lisa, how do you feel about this ordinance? Do you feel like this is gonna? What I'm asking is, do you feel like this is going to overwhelm our code board again like the last time we tried to enforce something?
So Lisa Hanan, zoning official.
Are you allowed to tell me?
I, I have no opinion or feelings on this.
But we, we will educate the public. We're going to educate first. It's not, we're not going to go out and, and, as the mayor stated, be, be sign police right now. We're going to educate the public. It's going to take a little bit of time. We're, we're going to let everybody know. We'll put links in the weekly. We're open for questions. Again, it's going to take some getting used to. We've got a few different things as far as the number of signs permitted and such. When it comes to the indecency and the fighting words, as we're not going to be approaching anybody because they're going to be, we're not going to antagonize anybody. If it comes to somebody being unruly, we're going to ask for the assistance of the police department.
Okay.
And they have. Do you have a full-time staff member that'll be on, on hand to answer phone calls from people that want to know?
Yeah.
I suggest you find a temp real quick.
But also as far as complaint-driven, just.
Complaint-driven, you're right. It's, right. So, yeah, I mean, we are proactive, but when it comes to, to any type of signage and stuff, we're going to let some of this be complaint-driven because we're not, again, going to go out there and be the sign police going, this one, this one, this, we're, and again, education is going to be key.
Okay. John?
Just related to Lisa's comment, I'd like to hear what the police will do because that she's going to refer people to the police if there are issues.
Well, I can answer.
And there will be those, and how are they going to be able to deal with the enforcement or are they, amount of those things, issues?
So Chapter 9A allows for writing citations for such type of infractions. It would be up to the police officer whether they write a warning at first or a citation. But Chapter 9A-13 allows for citations to be written. The first citation can be $100. The second citation would be $200 for indecency. And that will be, we'll do training with the police department as well, with their in-service training. I've already been asked.
So I'd like to ask the police department, just how they feel about this. Is Debbie, she said, how do you feel about this ordinance as we are planning to enact it?
Sure. Jason, just getting with the police department, you know, as, as a law enforcement agency, we're responsible for enforcing all the laws and ordinances that are out there in the city and the state of Florida. So it's our responsibility to follow through on those appropriately. We are going to take enforcement action. If we get calls for these types of complaints, we'll respond like we do with any other type of complaint that we deal with now.
So you, you don't have an issue with dealing with whatever comes out there?
It's, you know, at the end of the day, there's all kinds of laws that some of them are easier to enforce than others, some of them are more difficult to enforce than others, some of them require different types of follow-ups that we have to do, but at the end of the day, that's our responsibility.
And now we know why he's such a diplomat.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? So as far as cemeteries, can, is, is everybody agreeable to add cemeteries in the exemptions for this? And what about car dealerships? Does anybody have any feeling one way or the other about car dealership? Those are the only two things that really don't fall into holiday-type decorations.
I think they're a business.
They're a, now, didn't, Lisa, didn't you say that if people, if the car dealership wants to do something special, they get a permit for that?
They get a business event permit, yeah, correct.
Yeah. I think we just leave it the way it is.
So cemeteries would be the only other thing from my list, anyway?
If there are any ever in the city, yeah.
Yeah. And that's assuming that there would be annexations in the future. Okay. So, all right. Oh, John, I'm sorry.
Maybe one final comment. I discussed this, had my personal lawyer read this. My wife, and she's very concerned about the First Amendment issues. And there will be, there most likely will be challenges to that. So I want to make sure we understand that. I think what Michael Hurst said is very appropriate, and it's, it's a tough situation when we get into those issues.
Let me address Mr. Hurst's comments. He cited two cases. The one that he was, that used the F-word was, was a US Supreme Court decision that addressed, among other things, the definition of fighting words. I disagree with Mr. Hurst's interpretation that the, the expression has to be immediately in the presence of the person who is, who it was directed towards, and therefore signs can be appropriate. But as we've defined the fighting words definition in our ordinance, it is consistent with the US Supreme Court's decision in Cohen versus California where the, the court said, "Fighting words, those personally abusive epithets which, when addressed to the ordinary citizen, are, as a matter of common knowledge, inherently likely to provoke violent reaction." In the, in the Cohen case that Mr. Hurst cited, the, the court found that the T-shirt that Cohen was wearing wasn't addressed to anybody in particular, and therefore it wasn't considered to be fighting words. As our definition is consistent with the court's definition of fighting words, it is going to have a very limited application in our city. For example, if somebody put up a sign saying that if you voted for Trump, you're an idiot, some people might consider that to be offensive to them or fighting words, but because it wasn't immediately addressed to a particular individual but to a group of individuals, the court would not consider that to be fighting words. However, if the sign said, "Mr. Smith, you're an idiot for voting for Biden," theoretically that could be considered to be fighting words. We will probably not be enforcing, to any great extent, signs under the fighting words provision because it is a very difficult definition to, to understand as the courts have provided it to us. But there may be an appropriate circumstance where it will be a tool that we can utilize in that appropriate circumstance to enforce that sign. The, the US Supreme Court has clearly said consistently that First Amendment rights are not absolute. We have tried to accommodate that consideration in our ordinance. And to the extent that someone may be using indecent language on a sign in, in a city right-of-way or public place that could be viewed by children under the age of 17, that is consistent with the court's recognition of the fact that free speech is not absolute, and we will enforce those types of violations of our sign code. Hopefully, it won't be very minimal. Will there be challenges? Who knows? Anyone can challenge any ordinance that we, that we write. The question would be, what is our likelihood of being able to defend our ordinance? Our ordinance is based on the law as it exists today. That may not be the law as exists tomorrow, but as today, I feel comfortable that the ordinance is consistent with the parameters set forth by the US Supreme Court.
Okay. So we need a motion to do whatever you wish to do with this.
Make a motion to proceed with approving this second reading.
Subject to the amendment to add the cemetery.
Yes, for cemetery.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sign code ordinance as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.